Hey, how we doing?
Doing good, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're all good. I'm keeping my video off today just because my connection's not the best, but you're coming through nice and clear.
Yep, I'll probably turn off the camera in a bit just to cause, pull back to drag.
Cool. Benny's just hanging one minute, then I'm gonna get started. What I'm gonna do, oh, you're good? Okay, cool. So what I'm doing today is I just ran this big database sim of where I'm kind of in middle position and I'm playing against what I would consider like a fishy blind player. And my reasoning for doing this is I guess people are very common with like the third 100% range c bet. And I don't feel like that's maybe the best effective thing. So I'm trying to study this spot where I should have a pretty tight range and a pretty good range advantage. So I'm trying to explore maybe some bigger bets on the flop and turn. And seeing where the solver likes to do that.
Well, this will be good for me because I'm, I'm range betting a third in position 100%. So this will be, and I know eventually it'll become bad, so.
Oh yeah, eventually, eventually it leaves a very many confusing places and you kind of like miss out on a lot of value and it works for a while, but you know, you have to have more like tools in the arsenal, right?
Yeah, so I understand. I think you explained it right. I just want to make sure I got it right. Primarily from the small blind ranges you're looking at playing against a fish big blind?
Oh no, other way around. I am in like an early position, middle position. Here's my range right now. I would consider this about like my middle position-ish opening range, which is about 20% of hands.
Uh huh.
So I have my suited aces, some kings.
Okay.
I guess I'm not opening 2-2. Sometimes I will open 2-2, but I didn't run 2-2 in this sim. So this is a pretty tight range. This is like under the gun plus one for the most part. Then I'm playing against my out of position range here. I gave them a calling range of about 25% of hands. You know, all the pairs are in there. I'm saying they're three betting this. They're keeping a little bit, just 15% of so of like ace, kings, maybe some queen, queens. Uh, you know, they're doing some three betting. So they're not like total jeweler. They're playing back a little bit aggressively with three bets and this is what I would kind of consider just like an average kind of recreational who's a little bit aggressive. Line like they knew they threw bet some of their good stuff, but then they just make a lot of calls too.
Hey Alex, I got a quick question for you. In GTO Plus, can we send each other files?
Oh yeah.
We run and ranges and all that?
Benny, I'll help you out with that in the future for sure. I'll just start making repositories because I mean, I have, I'll show you, it takes, you know, days plus to run these things, but then all my solves are you know, just some pretty big files and you just start creating all these databases that you kind of like go through.
Yeah, like I'm running small blind versus big blind 163 flops right now and it's taking me, it's gonna take me like three nights of leaving it overnight, but then if I can share that and right, and we trade back and forth, we'll be able to get a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, it's a great way to consolidate. Um, so all of that to say, there are the ranges. What I'm trying to do to construct this tree I was talking about is I made it so they always check to me. I'm not even giving the solver that option just to keep it simple for now. I'm only betting right here. This is 65% on the flop. And then I'm just gonna assume for the most part they call. And I just want to show you what I'm doing on the turn. They can either dunk, this is a tree, or what standard is they're gonna check and I'm gonna have three bet sizes. This is an over bet. Uh, this is the same polarized bet of like 65%. And this is a smaller like third kind of block bet. So I'm giving myself three opportunities on the turn to play a mixed strategy after betting one larger size on the flop. So I want to see what the solver is going to be saying about that. So in GTO Plus, when you pull up the databases, right off the bat, it's really nice to just kind of see. You know, this is for player one. This is my fish player. This is who I'm playing against. Um, you can kind of just see that, you know, you can do all kinds of different things to graph out equities and EVs. So for player one, uh, you know, here is a lower equity, lower EV type of board. You can see it's a jack, ace, jack eight down in the lower right. So you can just kind of tell like ace, queen, four, things that make a lot of sense. These are all really bad boards for player one and you know, conversely, they're gonna be really good boards for us. And down here, you know, like a 10, nine, seven, nine, seven, five hearts, you know, these are all boards that are bad for us and better for player one. And that kind of is gonna make sense because on boards like this, you know, we're gonna have better over pairs, but he's gonna have a lot of like flushes and nuts in like, you know, straights and sets already. So we're never really gonna have much of a nut advantage. Um, so there's gonna be a discrepancy in the strategy there. So the very first thing we'll do to start finding what is kind of interesting is the opponent starts with a check and here's our two responses. We can either bet or check ourselves. So if we sort by betting, we can see some of the times we're betting near 100% of the time. Eight, 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 four, two, two, seven, four, four. I mean, pretty huge bet advantages. If we scroll all the way down here, you know, kind of like we saw with the other player, we're just, we have to take a more cautious approach. So I think it's really good to study and you kind of see like, you know, this is all the stuff in the middle is gonna be kind of tough and mixed, but it's really good to know what's on the extremes. So you're playing these hands well, getting max value and like you're protecting yourself when your opponent's out of edge. So I, this is kind of what the study is. I'm gonna let Gethin in.
Does GTO randomly generate these flops or are these things you selected?
This is a GTO comes with a very nicely balanced subset of flops that you can run either in subsets of 15 to 163 or so. And they say they're all perfectly balanced themselves. So that's really nice.
Alright, so that's nice.
Um, so yeah, it's, I mean, it just takes forever, but I have found it very valuable to do at a minute, like maybe 33 at a minimum if you're kind of like filling an idea out, but it's really nice to have up to the 163 when you're doing these solves. It just takes forever. Um, so going back to the database, we started, Gethin, are you here now?
Yeah, I'm here. So I just still poke my nose in, see what you guys were doing.
Oh, that's cool, man. Thanks for stopping in. So I wanted to, so I'm just kind of looking through this strategy here and we're just trying to find out, I guess, what is most valuable and interesting to us at the moment. So I want to find these spots where I have high EV and I'm also betting a lot on the flop. So I can sort that here and it gives me this nice little graph. So this makes sense. This is like eight, 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 four, two, two. These are a lot of, you know, high EV, high bet spots that we can study those, but I think that's gonna be kind of interesting that we know how to bet and play so many spots, but I don't know if any of these boards look interesting to you. I just generally start picking boards here and seeing what the solver tells me about them. I think this jack, 10, five, that seems like an interesting enough spot. So we can go in here. And so this is for our jack, 10, five. It's gonna say we're gonna be betting about 70% of the time in position with this larger polar sizing. So 65% bet. It wants to bet about 70% of the time. And for the most part, it's all pretty pure. There's not a lot of mixes here. We can tell solver is gonna be really good. It's just gonna throw in some good top pairs to defend. But it's also gonna bet some of those, but everything else, it's just gonna bet. We have a big range advantage and board advantage here. So we're just betting and giving ourselves a little bit of kind of coverage and protection. So from there, let's see what the response is. We're gonna bet.
So in game, how would you go about picking hands that you want to check back? There, looking at that sim. Right? Because we're, we see that we want some ace, king, ace, queen, ace, jack, some percentage of the time. Like, are you RNG? And then you're just gonna bet when you have over a certain amount or how do you go about doing that?
Uh, well, for the default, I guess here is to bet for the most part. And if I'm gonna mix against that, it's probably because I'm more player inclined to think about how they're gonna react against me and play the board against me. And so if I, if I feel like it's a kind of person, maybe they don't fold or they dunk probe a lot on the turn. I want to play some maybe sort of check back strength, but I'm not gonna randomize that. I'm just gonna make that more of like a conscious decision. And I guess how, after now seeing and studying this board, I'm gonna pluck uh, those decisions from like this top pair, king, jack, queen, jack, kind of thing like that. I'm gonna find some protection in there.
So you'll just kind of pick a couple of hands from there that you're gonna check back and the rest, like the ace, king off, ace, queen off, ace, jack off. You would just bet that pure?
Yeah, yeah. So that's what the solver is saying for this. It basically says if you want to give protection, you can have top pair protection. It doesn't end some, you know, showdown value protection here with your lower pairs. Um, this board's kind of, it's not, you know, super volatile or anything like that. So there's no real reason to check back some smaller hands that may have high EV later, like some weird backdoor, small suited connectors or something like that, that you know, we can extract a lot of EV later by keeping them in a check back range and maybe keep it more disguised. But for the most part on this board, the solver just wants to bet away. So I like seeing that. And his response is nice. I mean, 10% raise. That's pretty standard. That's not like, you know, I don't think people ever hit most of that, but we can see most of these raises are coming from, from sets. There's two pairs, which is natural. And he's raising some draws. So we can expect the opponent to have a pretty normal kind of response here of some value and a little bit of like mixed in draws. It gets kind of weird. They'll mix in some like nine, five suited. This is the stuff that is just kind of difficult, like you know, if you're the person in this spot, maybe you know, you have a light bulb like, hey, I, maybe I could check raise here. This is where the solver starts pulling in some of these check raises. It's like bottom pair or two pair plus some like backdoor flush draws and straight draws and stuff like that.
So we can almost assume that nobody's gonna be raising enough. Like, I don't think most of, well, the opponents I play anyways are gonna find these five suited five raises. So does that mean?
No, it never does. So that, so that's when it starts to come into like node locking and such that if you want to start adjusting the strategy, you know, you take out whatever that human element is where people aren't doing that, or or maybe they're doing that a ton and the guy's a maniac and he's always just gonna do, go bonkers with king, queen off. And that's not actually a legit response. He, you know, he's always gonna raise his king, queen off. So we we sort of like, you know, shuffle things around there to make it more human, but yeah, no one is ever gonna make the high amount of frequency check raises that solver does and with the combinations. It's just too hard to know all of them and then know how to play and post.
So does that mean you'd be inclined to bet even more than the solver does? And in the out of position person, or sorry, the?
This is my c bet in position?
Yeah. So would that make you more likely to c bet?
Slightly. I mean, yeah, if I'm less concerned about getting check raised. Um, but I'm already finding so many bets. I don't actually want to overdo it too much because all these like suited aces. I mean, you know, these aren't made hands. This is just ace high. You know, there's just a lot of hands that aren't actually hands yet. Uh, you have a lot of air in this. You can see out of the flop, 234 combinations we have at the start or so. I mean, we're, we're right off the bat, betting 170 of them down here and we have a really strong equity in either case. Uh, we have more than half the pot in both our um, betting and checking. So we feel pretty good almost taking either line because we have high equity, but it's just always better to to bet obviously because then you're more in control and getting more money in. So his response is only to call about a third of the time. Um, I find it very, very useful to use these turn reports to figure out um, kind of what these turn cards are good for us. So for player two, on a, on a few of the turns, the solver actually suggests he leads with a dunk. That's a 10, the jack, the jack, the 10, the 10. So if you're in this spot, you know, and you actually pair or trip up, you know, the solver actually thinks it's a pretty good idea to apply some pressure here with a lead. Definitely, definitely something to be aware of. These cards are obviously can be good for us, but they're also you know, really bad for us in that they invalidate over pairs and the opponent can do, do some damage to us. Overall, we're gonna assume the opponent is gonna check to us after check calling. And here's what I'm really interested in, this turn option where we have our over bets. This is our polar bet and this is like a down bet. And so we're doing a lot of these and these are our checks. So first of all, it's good to know what the checks are. Like we saw the jacks and the tens, we have to be more cautious on that. The fives, the things that basically give him a lot of trips and things that start to come into like straight draw territory. We just have to start getting a little bit more cautious about. But then down here we can see aces, queens, total bricks, like fours. Things that are good for our range, both that they give us more top pairs and straights and stuff like that, and then total bricks. Um, we're gonna be betting more of those more often. And some of these strategies are mixed between the over bet, our polar bet and our down bet. So I think it'd be interesting, maybe not a queen, but I want to see a big bet in another one. So let's take a look at this six here because we'll never down bet this. So this is pretty much like a brickish turn and he's gonna check 100% of the time. And we have options now. I'm most interested in these over bets. Hey, I think I lost my connection. I just want to give me an audio that you're all good. You guys are here?
I can still hear you.
Yeah, we're good. Alright, cool. Um, so here, yeah, we're at this turn spot. Over bets, polar bets, down bets. We have the six, which is a brick. So our range, we're trying to maximize the EV, crush this guy. So I want to see what these over bets are. We can see it's our over pairs. Three of a kind. Um, what are these right here? Oh yeah, no flush draw. So a lot of over pairs. We're just, we can see in this spot before we even do anything, we have a really high EV.
Um, is there a way for you to click something that only lights up, only leaves a blue on the range, like your over bets?
I wish they did. Uh, I was, I've asked, I've made that feature request. If you could just click down here, it'd be so nice.
Yeah.
To then just try to show all that. No, that's super important because sometimes you'll see something that looks like very, very blue and you'll be like, oh crap, I need to know how to play that. But then you actually look at it and it's only like 0.25% of some combination. And it's like, it's just never gonna be relevant because it's just such a small amount of your overall strategy. But yeah, it is very nice to see. Alright, so in a six of heart, we're overbetting. We can see our opponent's response. He should be raising three of a kind.
Were the suited aces all?
They usually do barrel.
Was that all the heart stuff?
Oh, um.
No, it's a mix of die backdoors and huh.
You'll find, this is one of the things that you'll find from solvers is that they love basically continuing to play these hands. Um, especially even for big bets. I'm not entirely sure on all the reasoning, uh, but I have noticed that.
Like even ace four, it seems like the heart version is the one we bet the less for the over bet. I guess is it, it's because we can all flush over flush someone on the river, maybe? I don't know.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, weird. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure why that would mix there. I guess it does make a lot of sense in case, uh, you give yourself a ton of protection if hearts run out and then the person leads into on you the river. That's like just massive EV um, to be in that position. So maybe, maybe it wants to strengthen its overall river range.
Can you look at the king eight specifically?
Sure.
So that one, we want to overbet that more than the ace four. Okay, interesting.
And so even like you can tell, like there are some weird hands in here, like king eight of spades. I didn't, I probably, you know, I wouldn't think of that on the fly. I wouldn't really know that, but solver likes these things. Um, and generally if it does kind of go with it though, if it goes with the combination that has the flush draw, it also likes to go with uh, some of these other suited combinations along with it. So I think that's pretty, pretty interesting so far. Our opponent's range is gonna be really, really strong at this point. Um, after calling a big bet like that, and then once they call here, we're just gonna assume that they're gonna call again. We don't know what their range is. We're gonna look at the river report and see what cards are good for us and bad for us. So on the river, the most important thing, what is the opponent gonna start smashing into us? Jacks? Solver does it with jacks about half the time. Then it starts, I mean, this isn't much of a combination, but some, some aces. It makes a lot of sense, I guess, with that ace of hearts there that we couldn't be checking back our, that ace four of hearts anymore. So we can never have a nut flush. So it gets kind of maybe a little aggressive into us there. But overall, we're gonna assume that this player, we're not gonna river a jack and the player's not gonna smash into us. So we want to see the hands that are best, highest equity in EV. We want to play these rivers right at the ends and the extremes. We would need to play these high equity aces. Correct. In the middle, we have some of these like middling pairs in the hands that we want to play or be cautious about. Are these tens down here, the jacks? Things we're already kind of aware of about because it's not really a drawly board. It's more about opponent's range is gonna be really strong, I'm assuming by calling pairs in an over bet. So he's way more likely to be tripped up here on these rivers. So we have to be careful about those, which we realize, but we want to play these rivers well. So say this king of spades comes off. Hold on, let's. So the board, so the nine of spades is actually the one that we're most likely to jam on. So actually, maybe that's the most interesting, interesting thing to study in this first, but you can see there's just a million different ways that you can start looking at hands when you break it down like this way, like what is the best for our range? What is the worst? What is in the middle? And I find it just kind of easiest to know what is at the extremes and then slowly kind of like work in the middle stuff and how to construct all those ranges. So the best hand for us was the nine of spades with our range. He's gonna check to us. And we're all in 80% of the time. What are we doing that with? Straits, sets. You know, two pair, over pairs, top pairs. The only thing we're really checking here is this middle pair, which makes sense. I think, you know, we were so strong on the river with kind of, or on the turn with that over bet of betting some draws and then overhands that over pairs and everything like that, that we just really smashed this board on the river. Um, of the 65 combinations we get there with, you know, betting 53 of them is pretty huge. We have a tremendous amount of EV before even betting. Uh, the villain's EV is 21. And so we can just, if we ever find ourselves in a spot, jack, 10, five, six, nine, we should be betting basically all in fourth fifths of the time. And we're gonna be hitting an amazing amount of strong hands here from top pair, um, straights, sets, everything like that. So villain in this position needs to call 46% of the time. It wasn't floating a lot. See, this is, Benny, this is what I was talking about where it seems like it's really important. Um, but you can see if you look to the left of there, the combinations of ace, queen suited, it seems like, oh man, you know, it's folding there every time, but it only is arriving with 0.06. So 6%. I mean, that's nothing. Uh, it's not really, it's not really playing that hand that way. It's not really arriving at the river with that combination. Um, so it would be nice to like filter that stuff out. I agree with that. So villain defends. He almost never has straights, very rarely has sets. He only has two pair, four combinations of it. So this is a really good board for us. This is a really good run out, super high EV. I think the lessons are on a board like this, on a brick turn, we can, and a card that's good for a river, obviously we just want to get in, get it all in. Um, any questions about that? Because now I'm gonna look at it, I guess, maybe from a little different angle of what, how it goes bad for us?
No, that's good. Good takeaway is on a good board that we overbet. When we get a good river, like we saw that all the air gets bet on the river. There's no give ups whatsoever that the solver has.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, I mean, so I think that's at like that one maxim. So that's one of the best boards and one of the best opportunities that we're never gonna give up. So we can definitely deploy in that position in the pony and as we saw by the river is almost never gonna have anything. And if he does, it's gonna be kind of like some half ass two pair.
As a fish, my mind is blown. I realized we could play that so, so well. Yeah. And I'm, and I'm only grasping just a small amount what you're, what you're teaching.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, do you have any particular questions that I can make this more clear about or anything like that? Um, because I'm not really sure what I'm just kind of.
I'm just gonna try to absorb what I can. I'll ask a question if I feel the need, but, but I'm just taking it in.
Alright. Yeah, how we, I encourage you to ask, like I'm, I'm very new to all this and Alex is very kind and he's receptive and happy to, to help out. I think that's right, right, Alex?
Oh, totally. Yeah. Yeah, I think being able to like teach a little bit is actually very helpful with, um, obviously being able to play better. If you can elucidate your thoughts, it helps out a lot.
I believe this is the first time I've seen the GTO plus solver used.
That is one of the slick things. I know Benny just kind of got it and I was like, you know, he's learning it, but he doesn't know some of these cool features yet. Uh, so I kind of wanted to show you. I mean, just how robust of a program it is. Um, so let's just.
Relatively cheap compared to what a marker would be or something like that.
Oh yeah, what's it go for?
Like 70 bucks, like I paid 95 Canadian. I think it's 70 something American, which I thought was a good price for us.
He gave it to me for free. I used to have card runners EV or something and he releases a new product and like just gave it to me for free. So I, I paid like $60 for it like five years ago or something. It's just incredible. And he updates it all the time. It's just amazing value. So.
Ah, so you guys are boys. I see.
I'm a fan, man. You know, how often do people like do stuff half ass and this guy is like all about it? So, um, so I'm super curious about, I don't know if any of these boards, do any of these boards uh, seem like spots that you guys would like to learn more about? If you just want to call out a board, we can hop into it.
There was, above, there was a two-tone ace, king, five. And I don't know why it caught my eye, but it did. I think it was ace five. Uh, I think it was two-tone. Oh, no, it's not. It was, uh, it's, it was two, oh, it's the, I think it was the ace, king, four, two diamond. It was three dimes. That's one tone.
One tone? Cool. Let's take a look.
I hate those boards, so let's talk about it.
Absolutely. Alright, so I pulled that up. We have ace, king, four. Obviously we said it, so the opponent always checks to us.
Okay, it was two-tone, right? Was that diamond club diamond?
Uh, ace of diamonds, king clubs, four diamonds. So right off the bat, when we're in this spot, we can see we have a tremendous amount of equity, 60% when we take the betting line. And we have a lot too. The solver is gonna construct it. So we're well defended with over 50% of equity. And this is gonna make a lot of sense. Obviously ace, king, we just have such a tremendous nut and range advantage here.
Right, because we're, we're the, we're the first raiser from mid-position. We should have a lot of aces and kings. I.
We're gonna, yeah, absolutely blast this guy because he's, you know, I, I think I said it, so he only has maybe 10% of ace, king off. So he, you know, this guy's always gonna be three betting ace, king. So he never has top two pair here or top sets.
Should we guess what turn cards we think we're gonna do a bunch of overbetting on and which one we won't?
Sure.
I think that'd be a good exercise.
Yeah. What do you guys think?
Well, my initial thoughts is if a turn comes a diamond, it feels like it slows me down. And but, but you went specific card?
No, that's fine. What type of, what type of turns, I guess?
So a diamond turn, I think slows me down as the aggressor, but I can't say why. It just feels like they got a lot of potential to having diamonds.
Sure.
Yeah. I think it's interesting too, like on a offsuit deuce or three, most of the time I would think it's a good over bet if it's just a king high board with the ace. Like I don't think we have a lot of those low straights. I don't know if they matter. I don't know if he has that many more than us that, that it would make us not want to over bet. I'm assuming like an offsuit six, five, we'd probably want to do overbetting. Um, I'm assuming that jack, 10, queen, maybe not so much because he's gonna have some of those straights. We do too, but I don't know if we have enough advantage on those. It's my.
Does the solver allow them a wide range of two threes and two fives and three fives?
I set that up initially back with their out of position range. So he does have some four threes. I said 75% of the time, maybe he's gonna have like a five, three suited, five, four, stuff like this.
Okay, so they can be there.
50% of the time. So it does, it does account for that. So I, it does give the solver the ability to play, um, some of those low hands. And consequently, I didn't actually, we, I didn't put any five, three suited in our range. So we're never gonna have that low straight or anything like that.
Hmm.
So I agree with the assessment that I think over bets are gonna happen a lot on bricks. I think we're gonna be much more cautious on draws, but I don't necessarily know that that's gonna slow us down all the way. Maybe we'll just choose a smaller sizing because we had such a big range advantage on the flop. But obviously, uh, if the person is check calling a flop, it's probably a weak ace or draw here in the spot. So we definitely have to be cautious. I agree with both of what you guys said on that.
Like I'm assuming on a jack or 10, we're gonna bet that two-third sizing. Like I'm assuming on a jack or 10, we're going to bet that two third sizing, I would think.
Let's find out. So this guy's response on an ace, king, he has to fold about half the time. Clearly he shouldn't really be raising us. His few sneaky pairs of ace, king, I give him point five combos, point one, five combos. Like I said. They will be fast playing most of those. And obviously solver almost always fast plays bottom set. And so turn report. So absolutely. Like we saw Howie, that diamonds are the worst. Diamonds give incentive for the other person to even dunk into us. So maybe that's something you can do. That's definitely something to be cautious about. This is immediately off the bat where we have to be cautious about. But we're going to overall assume that the guy is going to check to us and now we get to figure out what we can do. Let's sort by the highest equity in EV for our range. So these are the cards we want to, there's a six of hearts. So these are the, the hands that we absolutely want to smash. We want to play these hands right. Otherwise we're just leaving money on the table. These are our opportunities to over bet. It's the sixes, the sevens, the eights, the nines, stuff like that. The worst cards, queen of diamond, the low diamond, two of diamond makes a lot of sense. All these middle cards. Some low twos and fours. I guess that kind of makes sense. Maybe we're giving, we're saying opponent has, you know, he has more low hands, low suited connectors than we do. So we have to be a little bit cautious on that. Here's a jack of clubs. Complete, I think the jack of clubs, this is going to be an interesting card to look at.
Um, I got a quick question about.
Sure, absolutely.
If we over bet like a six of heart, what are we? We're going to need some bluffs to balance it out. I understand the value. Um, yeah, I'm trying to figure out how do we balance this out and are you recording this? I'm going to have to.
I am recording. Yep.
Okay. If I could get a copy.
Yeah, absolutely. That one, I can't believe how quick this went. So man, we are on the six of hearts that, that brick is to bricks. We are half the time we should be over betting here. We have so many three, three of a kinds, two pairs. Our top pairs are really good. Top pair, top kicker. It's going really strong with that. And we can see. It just gets more cautious as the kicker decreases. We do more checking. As the kicker decreases, that makes a lot of sense because if the guy is going to check calls on the flop. Like we assumed before, he probably has an ace or some sort of like combo diamonds. So we're more cautious, but with everything else, half the time we just start getting at it. Like we saw with the seven, six suited, it's not just going with the combo flush drawl. It's bombing with all seven, six, seven, six suiteds. It just gets so aggressive. So aggressive. So I do like looking at that over bet again. Let's take a look what it does. He should never be responding with a raise. And we'll see how the river fares for us.
I am so not using the over bet enough. I totally need to bring that into my game.
Yeah. Well, I mean. I don't know. I would, I would stick to either very small over bets on like positionally on maybe like a turn or just maybe trying to figure it out. When you're kind of like more nutted up on the river in position, because otherwise it gets really, really complicated, especially. You know, constructing kind of turn to river ranges with it. Um, but it is super valuable. I mean, you make so much extra money from it and it makes, you know, you allowed to bluff so much more. So.
Guess I should explore with it at the, uh, 25 NL level for a while. Put some stacks there.
Definitely. Yeah. I mean.
Yeah. I'm just starting to look at it too. I don't, I don't use it in game very much at all, other than like absolute bricks that I, I know. But like you said, I constructing the whole range isn't something I can do yet.
That's a big, you know, use it because I feel I release the fish so often when I, when I try to pull big and hard like that.
Well, one, one thing I do is, is tag players pretty aggressively and mostly I will over bet versus fish with value and capable regs. Um, I'm more likely to have a bluff, but I don't know if that's right or not, Alex.
I would say that makes a lot of sense. You know, that's almost more exploitive than GTO, you know, when you have value hands, you just kind of want to extract from fishy players. And when, you know, you're playing against someone who understands ranges a little bit more, you want to put them into more of that confusing kind of like. You know, you're polar and they're just bluff catching and they're not sure if you actually have value or if you're bluffing. So it makes it more of a mental challenge for them in that spot. When fish, it's just like, well, crap, you know, he could be behind, but I'm still calling. I guarantee it because I like my hand.
Alright, thanks guys. I gotta run. I'll catch you later if you're still on when I get back.
Sounds good, Benny.
Thanks.
And so this is nice. We can feel really good on this river. There's nothing that is so devastating that player one would just jam into us. Not a single hand. So we're going to check. And we have options to just start ripping the river. We can see it goes, you know, 63% of the time. It's choosing some queens, which makes sense. That's going to give us a lot of top twos and also maybe some jack, 10 straights. And then it just chooses some more bricks as well. To start jamming with.
Queens and the sevens.
Queen, sevens, a 10 there.
Why are they assigning those high, high value to rip?
Uh, because more or less we are going to maybe barrel some turns with some jack, 10s. We're going to have some straights there that he doesn't just have anymore. And plus we just have more natural two pair combinations with the queen with like king, queen, ace, queen. And, uh, stuff like that. Hands that he would have three bets, so they're no longer in his range.
Right. So, so those are plucked out based upon our whole range, particularly in the strength of our range.
A hundred percent. Yeah. We have such a massive range advantage that these cards enhance it. And even though we would potentially lose to maybe if I was like a jack, 10 of diamonds or something like that, we also have that hand as well. So all these, uh. Cards that could help him that are Broadway are also going to help us as well, like equally. And none of these bricks are going to help him unless he has some very strange, like two pair, like a king, five of diamonds or something like that.
Right.
So I think it's, I think let's look at a flush river because I think that's definitely a challenging spot to know what to do. On say.
As we saw on the turn, it slowed us down, I think.
It did. And so like, let's say it gets there on the river with like. Like a seven of diamonds. So even still, though, the flush gets there, the guy checks us all the time. And our response is all in about half the time. What are we constructing that range with? Well, we have a lot of flushes.
Okay.
Solver, well, we have seven, we have like eight pairs of flushes, which are king, 10s, king, 9s, basically all our kings and then a few suited combinations. That makes sense. There's not going to be a lot of flushes on board, um, with ace of diamonds out there. So solver likes flushes, obviously just gets all of them in. It likes set still gets all of them in other, ooh, why is it checking aces there? Maybe because we don't have the ace of diamonds? Ace of diamonds is on board. That's weird. So that's something, that's something that's very interesting. Um, solver will not get it all in on the river here with top set of aces. And I think the reasoning is because. That. They can't have very many top pair aces after check calling a large flop and turn bet. So their range then, if we're hogging all the aces, because we have top set of it, that means their range is more draw inclined. So if we get to this spot where we're hogging basically all the combinations of top pairs, that means their range is going to be shifting dramatically into flushes. And so we're super happy to get it in with all these other sets that don't block aces. And aces, we are checking the river. See that I, I wouldn't, I would have not, I would have just be jamming in aces here.
Wow.
Huge difference, right? You know, so yeah, so crazy to think like, you know, this is like, it's always awesome to look at the extremes because. And know if you're doing them right or wrong. And this is a spot where solver does not like getting top set in on the river. Strange. Cause he likes all these two pairs, top two pair. That makes sense. Top two pair, top two pair. And then it says all these lower two pairs are just worthy of showdown.
Sorry, my daughter is walking, so I'm back.
Oh, hey.
There you go.
Can we look at their, their calling range? It might help explain why, um, we're checking aces.
Exactly. That's what we were saying. Yeah. That, um, that he has to have much less reduced top pair aces that can call big bets like that. So he has much less top pair in his range. So that means it's, uh, shifted towards draws. So because we eat all the combinations of aces, he has less of them. So we can be less aggressive with them. And that's actually something that's like, that's good to kind of intuit on flops and turns when you're C betting and stuff like that anyway. But you know, just on a river spot like this, it's, that's very interesting that you wouldn't be jamming top set aces, but he would everyone, every other one. And so that's just kind of what I, we've learned from this hand so far. If you get into an ace, king, four spot. You can bet a lot of the flop. On a brick turn. You can over bet, you can over bet a tremendous amount. And even on the flush river, we are still having a lot of flushes. We want to get value from, we still have a lot of sets. And we even have some two pairs that we can jam with as well. We stick away and we showdown our top pairs. And we really like this spot. Our EVs are pretty close here. But when we bet here, I think this is kind of obvious, maybe not, but this is kind of crazy. The opponent should be folding all his ace, queens, ace, shacks, ace, 10s, ace, 9s, ace, eights. Should be calling with. Two pairs, obviously. But I don't know if this is like the games you guys are going to play in. Opponents are only. They're calling with aces that block diamonds. And folding all their other top pairs that don't block the diamonds. So that's very much something for maybe if you're in the spot and the opponent is like jamming into you. If you don't block diamonds and you only have top pair. Even if it's as good as ace, queen, the solver is getting rid of it. So we may be punting massive amounts of value if we just start calling all these top pair aces here. That kind of makes sense. The opponent looks just so strong and with backdoor diamonds getting there. I don't know. It makes sense. Uh, any more questions about that hand until see different boards or anything like that, or just move on to a different one?
Can move on and.
Alright.
Pretty happy with the saw there.
Cool.
You got a little better idea.
I really, I really don't have any kind of like, uh, rhyme or reason to this. I just kind of like go through hands until I see like, oh, that looks interesting. And then, um. So.
I think I'm looking at my possible Christmas gift to myself. And, and something to do for 2021 and 2022.
Geez. Well, yeah, you just got a Christmas gift and like a new hobby.
Yeah.
You're no longer just a poker player. You're a poker player and like a solver studier.
Yeah.
I'm kind of interested in both a king, high of king, low, low board and a just low board in general. I don't know, whatever one you feel.
Sure. Let's start. King, king unconnected or king kind of connected? Are you like a king where you dominate or a king where you're a little concerned?
Um, something like king six, king, five, two, uh, there's no suit there. I don't know if I want to suit or not. Are we more likely to over bet? That's a good question. Let's go with a, um, rainbow flop. King, high.
King eight, three? Sure. Alright, cool.
I'm interested to see what happens when a turn comes on the turn. I would assume we are over betting. Quite a bit, but I, yeah, I guess that's what I want to see.
Interesting how spread out that initial board that flashed all the dots all over the place. That's the widest spread yet, I think. And I assume it has to do because that flop.
Yeah. Yeah. You'll, I mean, uh, these are super interesting boards. I mean, we were never have this three. He has some more of them, but yeah, combo wise, it's like where the. You know, when there's no real draws coming in yet, it's just a board like this is. Basically just kind of around who already has value. Because the, all the backdoor draws are stretches. There's no immediate draws on the turn that get there or anything like that. So the board is like very stretched out, um, and.
Like I'm interested on like a seven of spades, six of spades. What happens then?
Alright. So it's always nice to look at equity in EV. This is where villain surprisingly may start donking into us on some very low twos. Tens and twos.
Alex, do you, do you dunk at all in your game?
Uh, I dunk more for sure now, uh, especially recognizing what the nature of, it's like a logic switch. When you realize that some of these cards become much better for your range. And if opponent realizes that, then you just kind of have to start putting them in the cage. So yeah, it has been like a kind of like a different, once I realized that the story kind of changed on a lot of turns. I, I have started incorporating a lot more donks.
Alex, you're playing the 200 NL better and better?
Uh, for the most part, yeah, I, I play between 100 to 500.
And so I, I. I do wonder how the responses you're getting then with that, when you're dunking into them like that. It's probably pretty fun.
Oh, for sure. I think people, I mean, well, one of the things is, you know, it's always nice to be a little bit ahead of kind of what like meta is too, and everything like that. And I don't think donks are quite as in vogue yet too. So people aren't as studied in them. So you get kind of. These very interesting responses where people either overfold or kind of go crazy or, um, you know, sometimes people play it really well, but for the most part. You know, it's just not one of those situations that you've been in a million times now where your opponent bets like a hundred percent range on the flop.
Like it was weird for me because coming from PLO for years, there's a lot of donking that happens there for protection and equity denial reasons. And to come to no limit and basically have none, and now seeing it come in more and more, it's kind of interesting for sure.
Yeah. That, that's where I kind of like first became aware of the concept was during the Galphon challenge and I can't remember. What one he was playing, but there was an excellent PLO commentator named Richard Gaylor on the run it once like streams. And he constantly just talked about equity shifts and everything like that and all the different reasons in PLO. And it was just so complex, but like the takeaway was basically like donks become really good if you know how to construct a range. And like ranges shift dramatically on turn was the, you know, important takeaway. Uh, so what did you say? You wanted to see, um. I'm sorry.
I kind of saw it already. Uh, it looks like those middle cards.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Talking about are bad for us, um, from the other screen you're on.
Why does it make GTO crash like that?
Oh, that would happen. Just lost it.
So I'm assuming that we're only going to over bet on like, uh, high cards that like, we have a lot of like aces, queens, jacks. Cause it looks like that five, six suited, um, the, it is better for the, for the opponent.
You got all that way ahead of me. I kind of missed all that. Uh, I'm going to go back and what did he say was king, seven, king eight, three.
Three there, yeah. So like, when you look at the bottom of that screen there, like all the sixes, fives are there. So this is us.
So this is us. The opponent has now checked to us. Um. We feel really good on, well, we see, we check a lot of aces here. Very interesting.
So we just don't over bet a lot on this board, no matter what the turn. Like there's no 50% over bet.
There's no 50% over bet. There is some mixing loose strategy here, like we'll, I think maybe take a look at a jack or queen, because it's mixing here a little bit between over bets in polar. But it looks like the overall strategy here, it's checking at least half the time, which you generally find when you kind of play a larger polar size on the flop, that on the turn. Um, you are going to end up checking.
A good takeaway for me though, since I only 33% C bet would be that on this board. I can go with a 75 at least because it's mixing the over bet and the 75 and almost doesn't use that 33, right? Oh, sorry. This isn't a, this is the turn. My bad.
On the turn, yeah.
So just, when it says a top there, bet 10.92, bet 5.46, those are.
Those are dollar amounts corresponding to how I set up the sim at the start, but their percentage, they're the dollar amount corresponding to the percentages of, I think it's 140%, 70% and 30%.
Okay. Thank you.
So yeah, so, so it mixes in between some of, some of those strategies, but to make sure that we get. The, like our, for player two, our highest equity and EV. Oh, nevermind. I'm sorry. I want to, I want to do it back to checks because that was really interesting that we check a lot of aces here. Do you want to, do you want to look at an ace to see kind of why we're doing that? That makes sense.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, boogers. I did this wrong. Uh, let's take a look here.
Player two.
Was that right? So. Oh, you know what that was? Um. I, I went to the turn too early. I was playing line where we checked back the flop. And so correctly betting the flop here, 70% of the time. We're in this location. He's supposed to be calling about 40% of the time.
Now you have this based on player one's action though, right?
And right now it's player one. So we're now looking at player one. And right now it's player one. So we're now looking at player one is going to check the turn to us and now we're in this position again where we have equity and EV, the best hands for equity of EV. Oh my gosh, these aces. So yeah, I was totally, yeah, that's why I did that wrong. That didn't make any sense that it would check the aces here. We don't want to play these aces wrong. Our equity and EV just absolutely smashes. Benny, you were right. We're not going to be playing an overbet, right? We're going to be playing that middle size is 70%. Which makes sense. We're going to have just so many more aces there. Um.
We want to keep them on the hook.
Keep them on the hook, right? Don't blow them out. Just keep getting that value. Our overbets here we can see are the twos, the fours, some queens. It doesn't really look like any of these strategies are kind of really mixing too much here. It's either overbet and check. These are some of the mixes here, like a queen maybe kind of doing some overbetting, but these under 10% things, it's good to know that solver does that. And maybe you should know what that ranges, ranges, but it's more about kind of just knowing when to check or check or overbet. So is there any particular turn that you guys want to see out of any of these on this board? Um, we were talking about maybe some middle middling ones before, like a seven or something?
Yeah.
So we'll say seven of diamonds to give us a backdoor draw to. And so well, opponent always checks to us and we get in this spot. This is interesting. Um, our equity is actually not great here anymore. Uh, when we start checking back and stuff like that. Opponent has to be, I guess, very strong here to check call the flop. So we actually have to start being a little bit cautious here because there aren't any draws. So he's probably already made basically. So it's just good to take a kind of gander down.
Well, I wonder with that, with that board where we got the, uh, the two diamonds now, you got the, um, they're connected with the seven, eight. I wonder if that really helps their range a lot. They kind of brings them a lot more possibilities.
It helps us more because we're, well, we should have slightly some more of those backdoor combos because he's going to be less inclined to float something, maybe like a nine jack of diamonds or something like that. But you know, he'll, he'll definitely be smashing eight sevens, uh, combo eights and diamonds, stuff like that, kings and diamonds. Um, it's definitely good for him. Yeah. I think the main thing is that because after check calling the flop, he has to be very strong because there's just not any draws, uh, that are upfront. So he definitely, he's more pair inclined.
Okay.
Are we, um, bombing the offsuit combos of ace five to ace, like ace six to ace three, like kind of what suits are we doing what with? Like, let's say ace six suited.
So here likes when we, we don't have a pair here, it's basically saying I'm giving up with ace high. I want to show down ace high unless I turn the diamond draw. Which makes sense because he has to, he's pair inclined on the flop. So we'd kind of just most likely be giving him money again if we bet with ace high. And we get some showdown value with the seven. So we check that. So our strategy here is betting three of a kind, two pairs, overpairs. It starts checking some of these top pairs. I mean, it starts checking some pretty good hands here. King, kings with a diamond, king, jack. Just something to be aware of. I mean, you, I guess, want to strengthen your range a lot to get to the river. But you just don't kind of want to overdo it, maybe, um.
Sorry. What's he doing with king? That's a king, a diamond, offsuit, jack or 10. Is he checking or betting there?
Um.
He's pure checking, nevermind.
Pure checking.
Yeah, okay.
King, queen. I mean, that's almost in your pure check too.
I was trying to figure out if having a diamond with our king was good or bad.
In this case, it doesn't seem, doesn't seem to matter.
Yeah.
It does. And so overbetting here are just some natural hands. Uh, let's see what happens with that diamond example. We turn turn some diamonds. So we're overbetting with that. Let's take a look at our river. Oh, that's a check. Excuse me. Overbet. River report. And here on the river, we can see that once again, opponent really shouldn't be donking into us. If he does, the solver occasionally likes it on a hand like an ace of diamonds. So we probably shouldn't be, we shouldn't really come into any spot where the opponent ever donks to us on the river. If they do, they're not playing very GTO and it kind of makes it like tough to figure out what they're doing, but they're certainly not playing GTO optimal. So what was that river report? We are looking at a check to us. We're going to sort by the highest equity in EV hands for our range, which are you know, these aces. Aces, it makes a lot of sense. We just have so many of them. Six of diamond is interesting. Let's sort it by. Well, how many checks should we have on this river too? So we're actually, we'd be checking a lot of kings if that happens, uh, surprisingly, kings, queens, tens, we're checking a lot of Broadway as well. We can glean from this. And we're betting, we're going for it on a lot of bricks. Let's find the range construction on something that's kind of 50/50, like they ate a diamonds.
Did you say we were checking on a lot of kings?
Yeah. Yeah, the solver checks a ton of kings here. King of hearts, king of spades. It's checking about 70% of the time. Do you want to see? Let's, let's see what the ranges are. King hearts. So this guy arrives here with 30 combos. He checks all of them. He checks to us. We are getting it all in a quarter percent of the time. Ooh, we don't, we do, yeah, interesting.
Is that they're thinking the solver thinking that they called us down because they have a king?
A hundred percent. Yeah. Yeah. There's much less combinations now. Uh, they're massively reduced or maybe they're even slow playing something maybe like a three, three or eight or seven. I, I'm, I'm not sure, but it's definitely very, very concerned because exactly we, we expect them to be calling with a lot of kings. And so I mean, I guess we don't have, there, there's only these kings around there anyway, which are all kind of like value bets, but these lower kickers, this one with the nine here just wouldn't be even attempting to get money in with a king nine, even if you trip up. And I think that makes sense. I think kind of in the spot. You know, if another king comes off on the river, it seems good on some level if we trip up, but our kicker just isn't very good. And after him calling two very strong bets, solver says, you know, like F that, this guy is probably too strong. So this is definitely an interesting, you know, spot. We started with some 250 combinations. And we bet a good amount of them on the flop, but we only get to the river on this run out with a few hands. We like 11 combinations for value. So you can, I mean, you can just kind of see like the stark difference between some of the hands where I think that first one we did was like 60 combinations of value on the river, where we could just like easily confidently like smash it in. And here on this like this very dry, uh, pairing board, when no draws get there. We only have about 11 combinations of value. We pull a bluff down. Oh, nevermind. That's not. Oh yeah, five, four. So it doesn't even bluff fully with, uh, like missed diamonds, like some of these bluff combinations. I guess we just don't have enough value here to be bluffing these full combinations that miss. Um, like five fours suited and such. So that's pretty, that's pretty interesting. I thought that, that's a pretty good hand for sure. Um, very dry board. We're very happy initially betting very, very dry with our king domination. But we realize pretty quickly that once he calls on such a drawly or a dry board that he is like top pair oriented. Cool. Um, anything more there? I'll just hop right into another one. Oh, uh, GTO is pretty cool too. Uh, I'll just show you this feature real quick. Um, overall can look at the aggregated reports across all, um, types of hands across all these boards. And so for the out of position player or fishy player, uh, his best hands that perform well across all boards, it should be no surprise is going to handle, uh, you know, pretty obviously true, but our jacks and queens, um, the few combinations that he did in three bet. Tens. So these are all his like very strongest hands, obviously. Um, so if you're ever in this spot and you're out of position, you know, you just don't want to like fuck up these high EV hands as much. Consequently, you probably shouldn't really care as much about getting really attached to you know, these hands down here, these low suited connectors that are just, you know, can get dominated and don't often hit that much and their pair value is pretty low. So that should all be pretty obvious, uh, for out of position. And then same thing, I think for in position. This is almost like straight down the value chart of bet your, bet your, your value, your top end value. Your low suited connectors have less equity. Not as excited about them.
Alex?
Yes. I had a question.
What's up, Gavin?
Is this how you would, like, if you were doing this, I know you're obviously demoing this for a few people, but would this be a fair representation of how you would study away from the tables yourself? Or is this more just like showing the features and, and kind of functionality of GTO plus? Or is this kind of a snapshot of how you would approach studying, you know, a particular board or a particular set of boards yourself?
Uh, this is more, I guess, to show, a little bit to show kind of Benny, um, some of the GTO plus because he just got it, but um, I guess the overall arching thing was for, I wanted to study a spot where I started with a significant range advantage against kind of like a fishy player and build a flop strategy and then change it on the turn to see kind of how to maximize value. So I was just curious of how GTO would play basically, um, overbets strategies here from this kind of dominating range position. So it's a study in the sense that I'm trying to find out some, some things how GTO does around the edges, but uh, I would not study, I would study a ver, I would find a database like this and then study, uh, like, you know, more specific lines, um, from something I already know and understand.
How, how much of your, your study would you say focuses on the fact that other players don't play GTO? I think, I mean, as someone who spent using a solver, um, I found the most value I've ever got is, is leaning away from assuming their response is going to be the GTO response and their response is going to be how do humans play? And then trying to understand how a solver attacks what a human does. Like, how much would you say of your strategy and your study is?
Oh, so, so yeah, so none of this, like I haven't node locked a single thing and I won't.
Right.
I, I like, I would consider a serious study to, to be node locking.
Okay. I just have never seen GTO plus, uh, used in terms of node locking. So I was just a little bit curious because I feel like right now what you're doing is very complex. I can honestly say like, I don't know how to play a single sim of any kind with one bet size or more on every street. How to play it game theory optimally. Like there's no sim ever that I would be able to get the frequencies correct on every street. And I was just interested to see how much of your focus was trying to figure out those frequencies versus trying to figure out the, the natural exploits and ways to maximize value.
Oh no, I'm just trying to see like, you know, my thought is so I don't make mistakes, try to know how to get the max value for a solver, what it thinks are really good boards and cards and turns and rivers and stuff like that. And consequently, what it thinks are you know, um, bad. So I kind of have some idea in my head what the maxes and min's are, um, for the strategy. And then everything else in between. Uh, is kind of then the actual more in-depth study of like, you know, either specific hands or you know, appropriate kind of more human reactions, uh, within the range and stuff like that. But yeah, I, I, you know, it just takes so long to actually node lock, uh, and start like I, I'll like clone this database and then just make a completely different, um, like node locked one too, with more natural responses.
Okay. I mean, it's just, I just know how long you can spend in a solver before, before you get, you get to anything. You're like, does this reflect reality or does this just reflect this like mathematical world of complexity that can sometimes just be incredibly overwhelming?
Oh yeah, no, for sure. Like I, we've, uh, we've been at this for an hour. We've looked at like three hands with maybe a couple like variations and turns and rivers and we've got maybe a few concepts, but none of it is, you know, even tailored into people yet now. So it, it, yeah, it's definitely more of like an exploratory thing to show a little bit of the program, um, and show just a little bit, I guess.
I was just a bit worried that this was how you were studying because
Oh, no, 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 no.
This, this would be like, uh, there's no possible way that I think a human could like basically down, like unfortunately we don't live in the matrix where we can download all this into our brains. Like we have to simplify and we have to kind of look for patterns rather than percentages. And I was just a little worried that you were, you were trying to download this into your brain and that it was probably starting to leak out of your ears.
Oh no. Well, uh, no, but also you can't be sure that we don't live in the matrix. So, uh,
But it's.
Um, no, I appreciate that insight.
But so far no one has fat me to a chair. Yeah. I, I've yet to suddenly learn Kung Fu. So, uh, until I do, I'm going to assume that I'm not getting stuff downloaded into my brain.
Gavin, you're already at like the top of the top. You're already like Morpheus fighting Neo though. So like maybe, maybe you did, you just don't know it.
The reality is that I, I, I don't know a single sim perfectly. Like I know, I know a lot of concepts. I know a lot of like heuristics about sims and I, I have some understanding of like why it bets big and why it bets small. But like, if you were to ask me what frequency does queen, jack overbet on a turn in a different spot, I would have no idea. Like I, I would never be able to get within 5% of the thing and trying to learn like, oh, on the turn it checks 22% and it bets this size 51% and the rest of the time. Like that just, I mean, you just end up with a headache and a loss of will to live in my opinion, anyway.
Oh no, yeah, a hundred percent. I mean, and then exactly too, because then are you like the kind of person on mixes like that, that you're just leaving it up to like RNG randomness or?
I mean, I use an RNG and I, but the reality is like, I, I'm not getting those mixes exactly right. And I'm always looking to exploit because that's, we're playing, we're playing against humans hopefully and against a human, there's usually a size or a strategy that, that wins more than a very complex, perfectly balanced mix.
Oh yeah. Yeah, no doubt. Uh, like just, yeah, this is, um, more, I guess, just trying to, yeah, like we already said, just, you know, not putting this to use on the table, just trying to maybe kind of like intuit a little bit of how GTO.
Yeah, it's cool. I'm, I'm enjoying it. I'll, I'll mute myself and let you keep going. I don't want to.
That's cool, man. No. I really appreciate you being here.
Alright, thanks, Alex.
Um, so what kind of board should we look at this time? We got maybe we'll just take a different line this time. Maybe instead of betting, we'll take a check approach. So ace five, five, that seems kind of interesting.
Sorry, just to, just to speak to that point, but I had to get away from the
Hold on, give me some.
Girls in my house because it's loud, but, uh,
Well, that's all good. I cut out for a second anyway. So girls and me cutting out. Alright, I'm back on.
Sorry, can you, can you guys hear me or no?
Uh, it's good now.
Okay. Um, yeah, I was just saying to that point, I think for me so far, the most interesting has been like what kind of turns do we want to over? We do with specific hands, but just kind of the concept of when, when it makes sense. I don't know. I think it's been useful to me to dive into the, these things a little bit as a, as someone that, that hasn't yet.
Totally. And that's the thing. You definitely just have to like, you know, I can be like, oh, you know, on, on blanks, you should be overbetting more often. And that's something that you kind of just generally see more often. Um, solver pull from stuff like that, you know, big range advantage on the flop. You know, the blank on the turn, you know, you still can probably just exert that range advantage still. So why not try to get more value out of it? Um, and you'll just start to see just kind of all these like small little patterns of things that, uh, solver does. Like it's more inclined if it's playing two pair to, to play fast with the top two pair or top and bottom, but uh, never like, or no, or bottom two, but never top and bottom. So like on a jack ten, six, it's going to play jack ten fast, ten, six fast, but never jack six fast. And that's just kind of like, you'll, you just kind of start to see these things, um, in solver that it does on, on these different things. And that's kind of you know, without getting too lost in it, um, it does have some patterns for how to get more value. So that's, I don't know, it's super interesting, uh, in that regard. But yeah, like, you know, Gavin initially said, you'll never match patterns and frequencies. Uh, it's just way too hard, um, to do anything like that. So ace five, five seems interesting to me.
What I do is, is when I play, I have like, I got a second computer that gives me all these sims. I found that to be pretty useful.
What do you mean by that?
Like I just have a whole database of all the sims and then I just can in real time get, get the solver answer.
Oh no, that's, that's cheating.
We call that real time assistance and it's a round five.
You're, you're only playing hundreds and you're using RTA. Uh-oh, you're doing it wrong. Like, um, all right. Uh, uh, no, no, no. Uh, that, that, uh, man, that, that was hilarious. Good joke. All right. Um, cool. So looking at this hand, uh, we have, we smashed this board ace five, five, obviously. We're going to bet here only a quarter percent of the time. And surprisingly, the hand that it's most likely to do with it is aces without the, the diamond in heart. So it kind of mixes on aces. That kind of makes sense. And maybe you just want to keep something strong to slow play a little bit, but this is definitely an interesting spot where we are playing fast with a lot of strong value. We're taking some showdown value that we have here. And this is where, uh, strategy, this is where, you know, more polar flop strategy is different, gonna differ. I'm certain that a range bet strategy on the flop would obviously, you know, you could be betting much higher and be betting some of these, especially some of these other pairs in the middle here to protect against some overcards falling down. And it'd be betting some of these for value and just overall, so you could bluff a little bit more because you have more top pair, but on a more polar strategy on the flop, you know, we're more polar, we're smashing it with value, we're attacking with a little bit of some, uh, some of these like backdoor draws here. Some very loose backdoor draws like eight, seven. But I guess it doesn't really block, that doesn't block any of his folding range.
Protect so much here because they have.
Say again?
Just wondering if the reason we protect so much on this is because he'll have maybe some offsuit fives that we don't have or?
Totally. He should be, yeah, let's, uh, going back, I mean, yeah, he has, you know, he's going to be checking these fives to us, uh, for sure. I didn't give him, I think I only gave him 75% of combos of it. And so, I mean, I don't know, in the game, like this is all, I gave him ace five, but not at full frequency. So yeah, he, he should have more fives than us for sure. Um, so yeah, it's a, it's a spot to be cautious. Um, we can get some value. We want to get some value.
I find it kind of, kind of, um, a lot of people simplify their ace five, ace four, ace three mixes pre to just ace five at full frequency. So when we get five, five boards, not in this specific situation, but like when somebody's three bet us, I'm always wary that fives are just overrepresented on, in most people's pre-flop strategy, if that makes any sense.
When they three, but when we get to the flopper, what, before they're three betting us? I'm sorry. I, I didn't, uh, quite understand what you're saying.
Yeah, like this specific flop, if this was a three bet pot, like people just ace five suited way more than
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
They should. So like on this, on this flop, would it mean that they have less ace five suited? Cause they didn't three?
That's true. They should have less. I forget how much that, they should have less for sure. I, I constructed it so he three bets ace five about 25% of the time, which I would consider, you know, I said, this is kind of like a recreational's range in the blinds. So I think, yeah, they know that they're going to be three betting ace five some percentage of the time, but I think most people who are a little more like recreational are just going to see ace five and call, uh, most of the time.
Makes sense.
I mean, I mean, yeah, like the whole, uh, we're just talking about like there's GTO and then there's humans. And I think everyone like goes kind of ballistic now with ace five, uh, you know, getting it in pre-flop or three betting and four betting and everything like that. Cause solver likes it, but you know, that, that hand was never in vogue, like a couple of years ago. That was never part of any range aggressive pre-flop, uh, range construction like five, six years ago. But once solver liked it, you know, everyone was kind of like, everyone took it. Yeah. Um.
I think like from back Doug Polk upswing course is like, is the first time I saw it anyways. And
The five, ace five is the, to represent all the ace, ace low ones.
And so I'm going to say, this is actually, we're going to check this flop because we're going to play a little more balanced and we're supposed to check three quarters of the time. Um, and so villain is still primarily checking to us a ton, just a ton. He doesn't really like all that, but if he does bet into us on the turn, spades, low cards. You know, some things that he can get aggressive with, some backdoor draws and things that he has a little bit more of, and he can just attack a little bit more of our weakness by not betting flop. But he's still cautious, obviously, because we're smart and we have a check back range. We're totally GTO. So we're playing this check, check on the flop and I said, he's still going to check to us. And so this is our delayed C bet option. Oh, tons of stuff. Um, sort by E V and check. So even on the turn, uh, we have all these high checks and high E V things. These look like, you know, for checking, we may want to just check again on the turn. And it's actually okay, because we can see that we still have a lot of high E V, even on these low flush cards. Um, because we were smart and we constructed our range. So we're checking back some good aces and probably some other diamond stuff. So you know, we're actually, if we're protected, we're feeling pretty good. What sucks on the turn for us, oh, some of these other spades. So we're checking a little bit less on say, ten of hearts. Let's see. No, I want to be able to play a big bet again. Or a normal bet. Geez, most of the ranges just checks. So in this board, we're finding out that once we kind of start checking, uh, we're just going to kind of, I guess, more or less not take a delayed value line. We're just going to start just trying to get the showdown. It couldn't even do some of these silly little bets, like really small third bets. Let's see what it does for this eight of hearts. Why it's doing that. So villain may get a little aggressive here. Supposed to be dunking into us about 20% of the time. He's doing that with his top pairs, some occasionally. I think that's pretty natural. We check back on the flop. We can expect villain to, that seems, you know, how my games are. I feel like I get probed into a lot there. But for the most part, yeah, they're going to check again. And this is a spot where there's no over bets or anything like that. This is where we just make this small, small down bet to get a little bit of value, to bluff a little bit. Um, we can just bet small here. We can bet small here about 40% of the time after we check back. And how are we doing that? We're doing that for some value, right? But what's totally missed here? These hands like jack nine, some king nines, king eight flush draw, that makes sense, but queens, jacks. So what we can take away from this hand is if we do start to like play more of a protected flop strategy where we're going to actually not get as aggressive with our top value. Um, on the turn is when we'd start bluffing some of this kind of like fluffy or other stuff to protect against range and that's when we'd start to bet some of these, these pairs for some showdown value to get a little value to protect against some over pairs. And we bluff a little bit more for much, much smaller size on the turn. It's kind of, I think it seems like what we're learning like in this spot.
So as a, for use in general strategy, um, anytime see a board with like a, you know, an ace and a low pair, should it, should it just, and I'm, you know, in position, um, isolated against a blind. Should I be more inclined just to, to, to bet small and, and try to get showdown?
It's, it seems like, yeah, when you get to that spot, you got to think like, is this a hand where I'm going to get in comfortably three streets of value? Or is this going to kind of be like, maybe let's play this, turn this into like a two street game? Um, and turning it into a two street game, kind of, they're more inclined to bluff small in a two street game. A little bit more, just cheaper on the turn. Get a little bit of value. It's kind of just like, let's just get a little bit of easy value on a hand like this when the opponent could have a lot of fives and he also conversely, he's going to have, you know, defend with a lot of top pairs and there's nothing really in between. He has a lot of fives that are going to smoke us and then some top pairs. And we have just a wide range too of kind of stuff in the middle that I guess we can play the ace as well and play it aggressive because we represent top pair, top kicker best, but overall, it's just not a board that we're super happy going gonzo on because uh, he's going to draw out with spades and he's going to have fives and he's going to have a lot of bluff catching top pairs as well.
Okay.
So that, I mean, that's, that's super important to know. Like, you know, the entire thing that we started this was like, how can we get max value? And here's like, well, we can still get a lot of value. We just kind of got to do it to a smaller scale and now just a little bit more delayed.
No, no, it's not the solver we're working, but say we then extrapolate that out to a board to say like, um, two tone, king, three, three. Could you kind of apply the same thought?
On some level, uh, he's going to have more threes, like say king four, four or something like that. He's going to have more, uh, fours for sure. And you know, we're going to be worried about that, but kings are something that we're going to start hitting a little bit more than him. Um, so we're going to have, just have more combinations of kings that are good and wanting to get money in. Um, and he's going to be a little bit less able to bluff catch because he's going to have like ace five or ace six on this hand. But he's not going to have very many like, I guess, king sixes in the other example, or like offsuit, like, you know, stuff like that, that he's going to be able to bluff catch as well.
I guess my, the, the reason I asked the question is to, to, to apply the overall, um, solve that we've, so there's like, not go gonzo, just, you know, maybe, uh, maybe bet two streets type thing and.
Yeah, totally. Yeah. Look at it. And at the start of the hand, I mean, it's saying like, it's basically saying that at this position, we have 230 combinations and we should definitely be getting value from some of them. Our overall equity in both spots is pretty good. No matter what line we take, we can feel kind of good about, you know, the strength of our range, because it is our board. We have more, more aces and such, and he's going to have to give up a lot of other stuff, but this guy's going to be pretty well defended and he's going to have a good high end range against us. Um, so I just think about it at the start of it, like, you know, if you have ace, king, your hand can only ever be ace, king. But on a board like this, if he's going to call you a three streets, you know, he's either going to be drawing or he's going to have a five or something like that. Um, it's just, yeah.
Pair debt, that low card. Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, it's just, you know, that's an important takeaway for sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so we'll just bet one of these silly sizes just to see what it does on the river. It shouldn't say silly, we'll, we'll down bet because that's our strategy. And he actually, this to, this delayed bet, he's supposed to about fold half the time. He has some natural check raises, it looks like, obviously. Now's his opportunity to start playing a little bit faster with some of these trips and top pairs and two pairs and full houses and such. So this is basically saying, if you're in this spot and you're in the blind and the guy checks the flop, don't like blow your load with your, the top of your like range by dunking out on the turn, you should be playing a check raise strategy here is what the solver is saying with that. Um, because you're so darn strong and him checking back, he's kind of weak that you don't want to punish that so much. You want, you punish that more with a check raise is what the solver does. Um, so that's kind of interesting. So this would not be like a, even though that's not like a nuts changing turn. A lot of times when you check the flop, solver will play a more aggressive dunk on the turn, no matter what it is, but um, here it's saying, don't do that as much, go for a check raise because, you know, you're just going to have a lot of fricking good value hands here. And player one on the river, he has two bets. I gave him either a dunk pot or dunk half pot. This guy likes, overall the strategy is to check for the most part on spades, nines, queens, tons of checks, tons of checks. For the most part, this guy is checking all the way through until it makes some decisions on aces, eights. That king's kind of interesting. It blocks, it has occasional blocks with a small king. But for the most part, this makes sense. You know, if you're check calling with an ace and you get a full house on the river, you should probably try to like get some value and put some money in here. Um, makes it way less likely that the other guy has it. So he's probably going to check back. So you just bet there and get some money. Um, any particular river on this board, any card or anything like that, that would be most interesting to look at, what it does for the ranges? Um, we can just say, we'll say he checks. And we have our bevy of river options, small bets, polar. We find some over bets here with queens, jacks, stuff like that, some checks. So this is, this is, I mean, this is where I would start diving in, uh, maybe a little bit more deeper with human responses and everything like that. If I was starting to look at it, uh, this particular hand, I haven't really, I don't think it's going to be hard to kind of like learn something from the, the board and the river and all this stuff right now without kind of like getting more kind of in depth. Um, I think the big takeaway here is that solver is going to be very much more concerned about not playing an aggressive polar strategy on the flop like this. Um, if you're polarizing, it actually only wants to do it about a quarter percent of the time.
I mean, I look at a complete board, it's like ace five, eight, eight deuce and rainbow. Um, it's like, what could they have? Doesn't seem, particularly with the range we're coming in at.
Yeah, yeah, we should feel, I mean, pretty freaking good. Like we should. Hmm. So we do have like a, yeah, we, we should feel good here. We have an E V advantage. Um, we pretty much have an equity advantage most of the time, other than we just check and give up. Uh, but yeah, we do, we do feel pretty good about this and we're no longer doing any little kind of like silly value bets on the river. We're either betting or over betting. Um, not at huge frequencies, but definitely enough to, to get some value. Kind of, this is like a natural bet, right? We're all betting here, ace, jacks, ace, tens, top pair, good kicker. This is interesting. This is where it gets more aggressive. So you can see the thin line here. It considers ace, queen good enough to go for over bets and big bets here, which it kind of makes sense. This is maybe how we like the value of checking back that ace on the flop. Is by the time you've arrived at like a nice safe river like this, is your top pair really good kicker? Can get even more value if you arrive at this nice, uh, kind of river like that. Cause I think, let's find out how often he has to call here. Um, he has to call a quarter percent of the time. He's even folding some hands as good as ace, jack, ace, 10. He should be folding some of these. Is that a natural response? The only thing he's really calling with is top pair. And he's more interested in doing that with a top pair, low kicker, other than like ace, queen, top pair, low kicker than some of these other middling ones, like 10, sometimes 10s and nines. East nine, it's, I mean, it's less interested in ace nine than it is ace, ace three. So, uh, you know, this is kind of, uh, there would be a lot more to kind of like dive into this hand. I don't think there's any like that many more kind of like easy gimme takeaways from this one. Do you guys have any questions?
No. Some neat software. I got to be taken off. Um, but thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Thanks for joining. I'm, I'm glad you liked this. GTO is amazing. And if you, uh, do treat yourself to that later on, um, I can help you get going with that.
It's so affordable. Yeah. I, I probably definitely am thinking hard about it and, and probably like I say, Christmas might be, because I feel like I have so much other stuff to do besides, you know, working with solvers, but.
Yeah, that, that's also the thing. It may be a total waste of time. Um, on some.
To learn still.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, like, you know, basic, exactly. There's a million things basically of ABCs to kind of do before it, but
Yes.
Also, it's really fricking cool because this is driving like all the meta in poker right now. So it is a little cool to see like where it all comes from.
Well, the other thing to think about too, Howie, I think like Jason Sue was saying, sell my solver, but the other end of it is if I'm enjoying it and it makes me think about poker, how bad can it be? Right? Whether.
Right, right. I mean, because we're all learning, you know, the way we learn. Um, yeah, I, you know, that, I was listening to him, his interview, um, his podcast with Brad, um, besides, you know, last couple of times we've seen him on, on Poker Power Hour and, uh, it's interesting, interesting to hear him talk and, you know, and I do wonder too, if his response was somewhat because, you know, if, if he classified himself, he'd be more of a field player, but I, but I assume he's done, done a lot of work too.
I don't think he's specifically wrong about me not needing to use a solver, right? I could probably go about it in other way. That'd be more efficient, but like, I don't know, my, if I'm enjoying it. I don't see, don't see why not, I guess. But as long as I don't start doing stuff because the solver says and I don't understand it. I think it's, it's the big thing, but.
That's the biggest thing. Yeah. You can't let like your kind of lack of learning in knowledge, and this is true for all people. You can't like let that get ahead of, uh, like what you think the solver is saying and what you should do. Like it, it doesn't pass some sort of like fundamental, like. uh like what you think the solver is saying what you should do like if it doesn't pass some sort of like fundamental like sniff test of your own logic and any everything like that like just kind of disregard it otherwise you're gonna gonna do it wrong um
I mean for the you know a little over an hour that we've been at this I understand what this is presenting me a lot more than what I've seen examples for you know pyro solver and some of the other ones um and not that I've tried to dive in I mean this because I know I'm at the place right I got so much more to learn on the basic stuff
this is let me show you something real quick that actually really really uh sells this program you can play against uh do 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 you can play against the solution and all these things to see if you're doing it right so I'm gonna be the in position player and we'll just sit down and start playing poker um so what do you think ace ten should we bet here or not I think this is gonna be a bet I'm gonna bet
yeah
on a six ooh that's tough uh let's bet small here and he folded oh I won but my play was suboptimal but it actually wanted
would they want a bigger bet for the turn
the turn it actually prefers a check which makes sense the seven gets there we turn it into then just one street game on the river um you know I think it's maybe a little bit more natural to bet on the turn and then try to get some free showdown and get a little bit of value instead of turning a hand into possibly like bluff catching thing but there that that was the first hand alright six six five let's bet that's natural perfect optimal we're awesome at poker let's bet
so you're betting look like two thirds here it's it's where it's all it's giving you is just a two thirds
well that's the only thing I set the simulation up for the flop at the start
you set it up okay
so yeah this is me just playing against this range on this board uh what do we want to do here on a we haven't looked at this low of a board yet I think this is actually the very last one I solved
and here it gives you three different ranges of bet sizes
I think we I think we're gonna overbet
I think it makes sense because we have all the aces that he doesn't
he could call he could call a lot right but I think our we have a huge range advantage oh crap he's probably gonna call here but uh we gotta bluff anyway how else are we gonna show it out I mean he's he's gonna be super strong here because he's called twice now so he probably has a full house himself and we kill one of the diamonds but let's just find out king four bastard alright so even taking this line the only fault there was that river shove which we kind of intuited but I just wanted to show you guys that he's gonna be super strong after calling the flop and turn there that that turnover bet was not bad because we have such an advantage the river bet was a mistake because he was so strong after calling the turn that we're just gifting him more money on the river by betting
so how do you know if your turn bet was the optimal solution
oh it just says there dealing turn um and if you don't bet the correct one it'll put the little error next to it
oh okay I see I got you
so in blue the hero bet is okay ah that's pretty cool
this is amazing so I mean if you want to like grind out hands and like you know workout uh you know just without having to lose money and put money on the line
right yeah
you know this is pretty nice so what do we think here we got this board this seems like a bet to me um this is more like a range bet but he's not gonna be super strong here he's not gonna have a lot of draws we can apply a lot of pressure on a lot of turns so we're just gonna try and bet here it's basically
for a bigger sizing yeah
and now here on the turn that's a brick right so this is a brick we still have a range advantage so we think we should be overbetting right that's kind of what we learned so far and he folds so we just scooped a huge pot with pair of fives and an overbet king eight uh solver almost always checksies I actually play a little bit different strategy I'm gonna try to check there we have a some sort of backdoor draw we don't want to get blown off that king high maybe best showdown
once we check the flop we don't really overbet ever is that correct
it's it's tough to kind of get going like that we can on in we can on some levels when we turn really kind of nice robust uh draws that we can represent but it it's not it's not as standard
yeah
so we'd almost need to like turn a straight and flush draw to to go from a check to a to an overbet
for the most part I mean you will that's you know if you kind of like look through it but for the most part that doesn't that doesn't happen so often certainly does um here this is an interesting board I mean nine nine six I think both options are valid we have ace high showdown but we don't have a real big nuts advantage he's gonna have a lot of nines he's gonna have a lot of pair of sixes um I'll just try a bet here though because I think that's easier to do and I'll bet that board obviously ace queen uh what do you guys want to do we'll we'll do like one or two more of these and I I think I'll wrap up the video
I'd still be betting
bet alright cool
now based upon the example you did earlier I think that
so now that we're here
oh man it's
brutal board this happens every freaking day right this happens every day in poker even if we have aces here like this happens every day so what do we do we're probably never gonna overbet obviously because he could have trips he could have straights full houses but we still have an advantage of we could have some things we just don't want to get smashed so I think a good bluff here is probably for that size and we can draw out and now here I mean is this check to showdown I would probably just maybe give up here I don't think I would bluff all in
that's what I'm thinking to give up
give up so it's check and we lost to a straight
um which was good for us
that's fine we made a good check on the river with our particular hand I prefers a check on the turn that kind of makes sense because we have some ace high showdown still we can draw out to that straight ourselves um but yeah alright
so our our flop bet was the best action but after it calls that then and that board versus what we're holding we should have gone check check try to get
yeah on that turn exactly because he's gonna be strong and then a lot of draws get there um and with our specific hold I mean you know I think you know obviously we can still bet that turn uh with range for certain things but um ace queen exactly is not gonna be the best hand
yeah with our hand here two unders I no suit
we're going all in let's find out
that's what we gotta do
it's only way to win so I just want uh yeah this is probably so this is an interesting spot right um we have a lot of kings queens uh we will have some threes
assuming we're gonna bet medium size yeah that twelve
or or over yeah
and then here what can we do
put on the brakes
um I think we have to bluff because we don't we don't have showdown
bah prick so he would have probably folded that other ever um technically that says that's an optimal bluff though
huh
we have
the right thing even though they got us
yeah so technically you know that's a money winning uh play there that was the optimal thing to do um even though we just gave him eighty dollars on the river but solver believes that we essentially have no showdown value here it the other guy can never have kings very small amount of queens flushes probably not as many I think solver check raises some of those on the turn so his range is pretty capped here and he's actually in a pretty disgusting spot and we pick up generally tens ourselves king ten um ace jack jack nine are probably all combinations we're more inclined to have it just you know this guy ended up rivering top of his nut nut range
but that jam gets there more often than not gets the fold to you can make it profitable
a hundred percent but yeah I think a lot of that turn continuity continuation range for him maybe like you know pair plus one club or like yeah something like that so all things that are gonna absolutely suck on the river uh facing home and overbet shove there
yeah if he doesn't hit a ten on that river what's he do
yeah you're never finding anyone ever to like check call tens there on the river it's just not it's just not happening
um cool this was really helpful Alex thanks for thanks for doing this
yeah absolutely guys thanks for joining in with me I uh I like this a lot as well myself so um thanks for all being here with me
alright see you Howie
yep see ya
see you later guys